I appreciate that, thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 23 Public Work Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Gavin, I believe we have some very special guests here with us this evening.
We do. The room is a little bit more packed than it normally is as we are so proud to welcome Dr. Frieling and our chamber singers who are going to celebrate the volunteer work that our board does. So I would ask to, where are you, Dr. F? Oh, you're back there. Dr. F., you want to just tell us what we're going to hear tonight?
Actually, I'm going to...
Or you want to show us?
One minute.
Okay.
One minute.
Sure.
Hi. "Abstra" is a beautiful piece by Jacob Naverud that consists of English and Latin. It is composed in a way where you understand the message of the Latin words even if you don't know the translation, but just in case they are followed by the same words in English. The overall theme of the piece is to look towards the future in a positive light while letting negative things go.
That's a great message. That's a great message.
(music) To the stars, to the stars, search, 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 search. When you're tired and troubled and you have lost your way, don't let hard times leave you astray. Though you may be weary, just know you're not alone, for the stars will guide you home. All may change, just take your time, it's all right, the world will help you, the world will help you. We will give you light. Abstra, 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 abstra. To the stars, to the stars, to the stars, to the stars. To the stars, for they may change, just take your time, it's all right, the world will help you, the world will help you. We will give you light. Abstra, 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 abstra. To the stars, to the stars, to the stars, to the stars. To the stars, for they may change, just take your time, it's all right, the world will help you, the world will help you. We will give you light. To the stars, to the stars, search, 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 search. Abstra, 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 abstra. (music)
I don't even know that I have the words to capture our appreciation for you, really. So we are so incredibly grateful for you coming and spending some of your night with us and all you do every day. I want you to come to every meeting. Such a nice way to open up and really thank you so much. You couldn't have asked for a better show of appreciation.
I think I like that idea.
So thank you. It's a reminder, yes. It's a reminder of why we do what we do, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to follow up, I did get, I did get a sneak preview of this. I happened to be walking through the high school with Dr. Walsh and I heard what I thought was a slow leak of the radiator system, but it was you guys just practicing breathing at the time. So I really was like, I'm really worried, I have to call Mr. Scalisi, we have a major heating problem. But I walked in and I'm like, what's going on? They're like, oh, they're breathing, they're breathing. So, okay, okay. I said, can we hear a little singing? And we heard a little bit of singing, so that was, that made me at least relaxed that we weren't having a major, you know, meltdown of our heating system. And then, of course, you get the joy of music, right? So, you know, there are so many times that I celebrate all the things that you guys do and I appreciate it and I know our board does as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Frieling. Okay. That's a hard act to follow. Hi, everyone. It's Board of Appreciation Month and we are so happy to have an opportunity to show our appreciation for all of you. I'm Lauren Cruz.
And I'm Vicki Mascatelli.
We are the current co-presidents of Rockville Center PTA Council. We're here on behalf of RBC PTA to express our gratitude and to say a sincere thank you to all of you for all of the time, energy, and support you give our children, our schools, and the entire Rockville Center community. And that's not just about the time and energy, but also your thoughtfulness and consideration for addressing both the immediate needs of our district, but also working to develop a cohesive vision for our future. So thank you.
As a small token of our appreciation, we worked with SST to create custom desk organizers for you and included some red and blue goodies just for fun. We hope you enjoy them. Thank you for everything that you do. There are so many exciting things happening in our district right now and we are so proud to be up here and showing you appreciation that you deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a partnership for sure and we appreciate all the work that you both do as well, so thank you. Mr. Gavin, and one last note before I turn it over to you, Mr. Gavin.
Sure.
And thank you to SST as well. These are awesome. As Board President, I just want to take a moment to recognize the four women sitting to my left. We know it's not an easy job and I appreciate all of you very much and I couldn't do this without you, so thank you all very much for all the time that you put into this role. It's very much appreciated. Mr. Gavin, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Barry. I just want to remind everyone that parent-teacher conferences, sign-ups for the high school and middle school are live. For the links, parents are encouraged to use the Wempling web link that was sent out in ParentSquare. Middle school conferences are Tuesday, October 29th and November 4th, and the high school is October 30th and November 6th. So please make sure, I believe the high school link just went live today, so if you, for our parents, you can have a, you can have a parent-teacher conference with any of your children's teachers. And if they're, for whatever reason, the timeframe doesn't work, you can always reach out to your guidance counselor and set up a time outside of that window. To go back to our singers, I attended the Tri-Am inductions last night and was blown away and was so proud by our musicians for their accomplishments. Part of that induction ceremony, so we're not just recognizing the new students that are in Tri-Am, but we're also talking about some of the, and listening to the original compositions of our IB musicians. And we had a combination of those students that arranged their own composition and then played. We had an outstanding drum piece. We had a piano accompaniment with a violin. And then we had some other students that recorded it and made it, all the arrangements through the software that we use. I'm going to get it wrong. It's not Final Project, but it's something like with the word final in it, that they use all of these different instruments and arrange an entire composition themselves.
Mr. Gavin, I believe we have some very special guests here with us this evening.
We do. The room is a little bit more packed than it normally is as we are so proud to welcome Dr. Friling and our chamber singers who are going to celebrate the volunteer work that our board does. So I would ask to, where are you, Dr. Friling? Oh, you're back there. Dr. Friling, you want to just tell us what we're going to hear tonight? Or you want to show us? Okay. Sure.
Hi. "Astra" is a beautiful piece by Jacob Navarut that consists of English and Latin. It is composed in a way where you understand the message of the Latin words even if you don't know the translation, but just in case, they are followed by the same words in English. The overall theme of the piece is to look towards the future in a positive light while letting negative things go.
That's a great message.
I don't even know that I have the words to capture our appreciation for you, really. So we are so incredibly grateful for you coming and spending some of your night with us and all you do every day. I want you to come to every meeting. Such a nice way to open up and really thank you so much. You couldn't have asked for a better show of appreciation.
I think I like that idea.
So reminder, yes. It's a reminder of why we do what we do. So, thank you very much.
And to follow up, I did get, I did get a sneak preview of this. I happened to be walking through the high school with Dr. Walsh and I heard what I thought was a slow leak of the radiator system, but it was you guys just practicing breathing at the time. So I really was like, I'm really worried. I have to call Mr. Scalisi. We have a major heating problem. But I walked in and I'm like, what's going on? They're like, oh, they're breathing. They're breathing. So, okay, okay. I said, can we hear a little singing? And we heard a little bit of singing. So that was, that made me at least relaxed that we weren't having a major meltdown of our heating system. And then, of course, you get the joy of music, right? So, you know, there are so many times that I celebrate all the things that you guys do and I appreciate it and I know our board does as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Friling.
Okay. That's a hard act to follow. Hi, everyone. It's Board of Appreciation Month and we are so happy to have an opportunity to show our appreciation for all of you. I'm Lauren Cruz.
And I'm Vicki Maskatelli.
We are the current co-presidents of Rockville Center PTA Council. We're here on behalf of RBC PTA to express our gratitude and to say a sincere thank you to all of you for all of the time, energy, and support you give our children, our schools, and the entire Rockville Center community. And that's not just about the time and energy, but also your thoughtfulness and consideration for addressing both the immediate needs of our district, but also working to develop a cohesive vision for our future. So, thank you.
As a small token of our appreciation, we worked with SST to create custom desk organizers for you and included some red and blue goodies just for fun. We hope you enjoy them. Thank you for everything that you do. There are so many exciting things happening in our district right now and we are so proud to be up here and showing you appreciation that you deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a partnership for sure and we appreciate all the work that you both do as well. So, thank you. Mr. Gavin, and one last note before I turn it over to you, Mr. Gavin.
Sure.
And thank you to SST as well. These are awesome. As Board President, I just want to take a moment to recognize the four women sitting to my left. We know it's not an easy job and I appreciate all of you very much and I couldn't do this without you. So, thank you all very much for all the time that you put into this role. It's very much appreciated. Mr. Gavin, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Barry. I just want to remind everyone that parent-teacher conferences, sign-ups for the high school and middle school are live for the links. Parents are encouraged to use the Wempling web link that was sent out in ParentSquare. Middle school conferences are Tuesday, October 29th and November 4th. And the high school is October 30th and November 6th. So, please make sure, I believe the high school link just went live today. So if you, for our parents, you can have a conference, you can have a parent-teacher conference with any of your children's teachers. And if they're, for whatever reason, the timeframe doesn't work, you can always reach out to your guidance counselor and set up a time outside of that window. To go back to our singers, I attended the TRIAM inductions last night and was blown away and was so proud by our musicians for their accomplishments. Part of that induction ceremony, so we're not just recognizing the new students that are in TRIAM, but we're also talking about some of the, and listening to the original compositions of our IB musicians. And we had a combination of those students that arranged their own composition and then played. We had an outstanding drum piece. We had a piano accompaniment with a violin. And then we had some other students that recorded it and made it, all the arrangements through the software that we use. I'm going to get it wrong. It's not Final Project, but it's something like with the word "final" in it. That they use all of these different instruments and arrange an entire composition themselves. And it's just an amazing piece. It's one of my favorite classes to go in and visit. I went into Dr. Friling's class last week, or two weeks. I don't even know if it was last week. Within the last eight days, I went into Dr. Friling's office, class, and sat down and watched the kids as they go through this process. So they learn what the rules of music are and then they learn how to apply them. And then they're encouraged to break them and do their own thing, which I absolutely love. I think it's fantastic. It's one of the best classes that you can go and see. I also want to give a shout out to Mike Musilli at the high school. I went to his TOK class the other day and was completely blown away. He did a great job organizing in class, but it was the kids that ran it. And so, when you see the students actually have real, true debates where they're referring back to philosophical understandings and applying it to real-world situations now. And the students on the outside of the ring are listening to the things that were said and asking poignant and informed questions and they're all doing it. I think Mike spoke about eight times or seven times during the whole class and the kids ran it. And that's what you're looking for from that level of class. It was really something to see. So, thank you, Mike, for putting that on. And I'm singling him out because I had a chance to see it, but I know so many of our teachers do this on a daily basis. So, just want to say thank you to all of them for their hard work and their ability to try something new and be creative. Homecoming is this Saturday. The parade steps off at 1:00 PM with the game to follow against the Tough Men Hasset team. So, we are looking forward for that game. Our athletes are doing pep tours at all of the elementary schools, right, my elementary principals, on Friday. So, the next generation of Cyclones are truly psyched up for the game this weekend. We have two soccer playoff games on Friday. We have the boys who are away at Jericho, they won their first round, and the girls that start the quarterfinal round as well. The girls are home, the boys are away. Good luck to all of them. I see that our cross-country kids came back again, well on their way to, again, for our young ladies, dominating the competition. So, we are super excited. They just won their last meet. We had the Fall Surprise at Wilson where our students get to see all of their pumpkins on the lawn and get a chance to go pick them. So, thank you to our PTA partners for helping us work that out. We had a Fall Festival at UWIT. We had Math Night at Watson. We had Riverside Fun Run and we had the Covert Fall Fest. So, we had a very busy last week and a half in terms of our events at our school. So, again, these were partnerships not only with our teachers and our building principals, and thank you for putting that on, but it was also a partnership with parents and PTA. And we look to continue that positive relationship. I also want to say congratulations to our very own trustee Tara Hackett for her presentation at New York State School Boards on Finding the Next Superintendent. I have to be honest, when I saw the title, I was a little nervous. I was like, hmm. I don't know how I feel about this, but she did an unbelievable job in representing what a professional search process should look like. And that, to me, was a great way for us to showcase what Rockville Center does and the way that they do it. So, thank you for that, Tara. And that's my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Turning to the Public Work Session, we have at first, elementary data presentation. Mr. Gavin?
We do. We have our crack team of elementary principals assembled here this evening to go over our latest state and local assessment results and talk about not only what the results were, the things that we found, the challenges that we are going to try to rise to and meet, and the things that we've learned and how we're going to get better. So, I will introduce Ms. Pascarella, who I believe is kicking us off. Is that correct, Jen?
That is correct.
Great. Thank you, Jen.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for inviting us back to present our comprehensive data analysis for all of our elementary schools. Before we dive into the details, I want to just take a second to acknowledge our exceptional team, especially since we've recently added some members. So, Ms. D Martino, Ms. McGovern, Ms. Nizzler, and Ms. Accardi have joined our team's work this year and the colleagues have brought just such a fresh perspective and innovative ideas to what we're already doing. And they have significantly enhanced the value and depth of our analysis with their perspectives and their collaborative spirit and their constructive approach has really been instrumental in moving our process along. Our data analysis follows a dynamic cyclical process of inquiry, action, and reflection. This approach allows us to ask pertinent questions based on our initial observations, take informal action based on those findings, and reflect on those outcomes to inform our future inquiries. This cycle ensures that our analysis remains relevant, adaptive, and continually approving. My colleagues are going to share specific results and discuss our goals and action plans for the future. And we're excited and proud to present our findings and we await your feedback and insights.
Good evening. I'll start the presentation by talking about our reading benchmarking. F and P benchmarking. All students are assessed using the Fountas and Penel Benchmarking System, also known as F and P, three times per year. This assessment provides teachers with an instructional reading level for students, but most importantly, it offers insights into their reading behaviors which helps shape instructional strategies and supports. The one-on-one time teachers spend individually with students during F and P benchmarking is an essential part of the process. It allows teachers to gain unique and powerful insights into how students interact with text, providing a deep understanding of their thought processes and reading habits. This experience empowers teachers to understand the strategies students are using or struggling with, shifting the focus from what they can read to how they are reading it. Teachers gain valuable information on students' word-solving strategies, also known as decoding, comprehension at both the literal and inferential levels, vocabulary and fluency. This information is instrumental in pinpointing the areas where students need targeted instruction, making our teaching more purposeful and effective. Here you can see our leveling system and two teachers working individually, one-on-one, with students during the benchmarking process. So, the slide shows Rockville Center's benchmark data for the fall of 2023 and the spring of 2024. The blue bar indicates students who have met or exceeded grade-level instructional text benchmarks. The red bar shows students who are approaching instructional benchmarks. As you can see across the board, all grade levels, we have students within 70% to 80% meeting or exceeding grade-level instructional expectations.
The NWA is a computerized adaptive assessment that our students take three times a year in reading and in math. We use the NWA amongst other things to, as a universal screener, to determine which students might need extra services, to determine reading Lexile levels, and to compare data to see how our students are doing individually, as a class, and here as a school district. So, when we look at how Rockville Center does against normed national data, we see that the national norm for a score for students is in the 50th percentile. And in Rockville Center, our K-5 students have an average of 60, in the 68th percentile. So, our students are, our average scores are way higher than, significantly higher than the national norms. We also see the green in this graph that shows that 40% of our students are scoring in the 75th percentile or above. So, we have 40% of our students in the top quartile. And then if we look at the red, the red bar, we see that only 10% of our students are scoring in the 25th percentile or lower. So, we have more kids in the higher quartiles and less kids in the lower quartiles for our scoring. Here we see Rockville Center scores in blue and national norms in red. This is for math for the fall of 2023 and the spring of 2024. And here we see that we score at every single grade level above national norms and a nice steady progression in math from kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade. And here we see our reading score, same thing, fall of 2023, spring of 2024. And at every grade level, we score above national norms and a nice steady progression of scores going from first grade to fifth grade. Our kindergartners take the MAP reading fluency assessment. So, the MAP reading fluency assesses phonics, phonemic awareness, decoding, vocabulary, and comprehension. And it measures how students are doing on their young journey through reading. The bottom left-hand corner shows how students came into Rockville Center early in the fall. The blue and the green, the blue shows above average. The green shows meeting expectations and the orange and red show approaching or below levels. And then we see where those scores look in the spring, where our students, 90% of our students are scoring and they meet or exceeds expectations. That's what the blue and green bars are. So, we're scoring nicely at reading at the kindergarten level.
Students in grades three through five participate in New York State assessments for ELA and for mathematics. Last year, our fifth graders also participated in New York State science assessments for the very first time. This slide compares participation in states, in state tests for both ELA and math between the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years. As shown, participation has significantly increased, enhancing the validity of the data we use to inform instructional decisions. Our state education department scores students on a scale rating from four to one. Levels three and four indicate proficiency or mastery of grade-level standards, while levels one and two indicate partial or below proficiency within grade-level standards. This slide features bar graphs comparing RBC students at levels three and four with their regional counterparts in Nassau County. It should be noted that Nassau County is the highest-performing region in New York State. Notably, RBC students indicated by the blue bars outperform regional peers indicated by the red bars in both ELA and math, which, as you can imagine, is a great source of pride for RBC. The next two slides I'm going to present show charts comparing student performance in ELA and math across two school years. First, regarding ELA, please note the left arrow indicating the percentage of RBC students who scored a Level Four during the 22, 23 school year. While staying in that same column, I now direct your attention to the 23, 24 school year. As you can see, there is a noticeable increase in the percentage of students achieving mastery from one year to the next. Our district is committed to helping our High Level Three students advance to Level Four. At this time, I'd like to also highlight the regional gap percentages as indicated by the arrow to the right. For the 22, 23 school year, RBC outperformed the region for students achieving levels three and four as shown by the regional gap percentage. The 23, 24 data confirms RBC's consistent performance across grades three through five, often with significantly increased margins, which is also a great point of pride for us. Let us now turn our attention to the student performance levels for our state math assessments, specifically the percentages of our Level Three and Four learners as indicated by the arrow. You'll notice an increase in the percentages from the 22, 23 school year to the 23, 24 school year. Our goal is to provide instruction that not only fosters excellence, but promotes consistent growth year over year. The bar graphs displayed highlight both the regional and state gaps between RBC students in grades three through five that score a Level Three or Four for both ELA and math. As you can see, our students are not only performing, outperforming their counterparts in the region, but they're doing so with their counterparts from the state as well. This chart displays student performance levels on the Grade Five New York State Assessment, which I had mentioned earlier was their first experience with taking this state test. Many districts across the state felt that this test was difficult and not an appropriate measure of Grade Five science standards. Despite this, the percentage of Grade Five RBC students achieving levels three and four exceeded that of their regional peers with an 8% regional gap percentage. The bar graph shows not only the regional gap, but also the state gap. As you can see, our students in Grade Five outperformed their state counterparts as well. While we cannot control how assessments are developed, we can enhance our student experiences through data analysis and response review. Our collaborative data action plans empower administration and teachers to make informed instructional decisions to help meet our students' needs. This leads to my final slide before I hand it over to Ms. McGovern. We are fortunate to have various data analysis tools at our disposal. These tools help us identify our strengths and areas for improvement in our instruction. With this information, district and building teams will continue to engage in meaningful discussion and action plans focused on increasing student performance. Thank you.
Based on the data from the 2023, 2024 school year, this slide highlights our focus for the 2024, 2025 school year and opportunities for growth. We have already started targeting these elements and we are going to continue the focus on them throughout the school year. After analyzing and reflecting on last year's results, we noticed an improvement in constructed responses and we believe that this is a result of targeted explicit instruction in this area. We are going to continue to build upon our inquiry units and deliver explicit instruction based on student needs. Understanding that we have made some improvements in constructed responses, this year we are focusing on the extended response or the essay question. While we saw some growths from, some growth from students receiving threes to fours, something that we noticed was that our students left points on the table when answering the extended response question. For those unfamiliar with the test, constructed response questions are typically a paragraph or less, while the extended response questions are generally three paragraphs for students in fourth and fifth grade. We are expanding our approach this year to develop a systematic approach to the extended response district-wide. We are digging deeper and supporting our students in moving from partial credit to full credit when preparing our students for these four-point questions. We are also focusing on the short constructed response two-point questions in math. With regards to CBT or computer-based testing, we are going to continue to make sure that our students are familiar with taking these tests on the computer. We want to be sure that we are utilizing Castle Learning and that we are familiarizing our students with the format of the computerized tests and explicitly teaching them how to use the math manipulatives and tools on the computer. We are going to ensure that they've been exposed to and have taken tests like this before in class, build their stamina, and be sure that we are simulating what a computer-based test is like in their comfortable classroom setting. With regard to our inquiry units, this year, grade levels three through five met in teams over the summer to make adjustments to the inquiry units. We're continuing with our tiered approach with supports in place in classrooms following the MTSS plan and using data from this presentation to make individualized student decisions. Everyone in tiers two and tiers, tier two and three are receiving targeted goals and we are monitoring student progress district-wide. We are utilizing our win period to stretch and support students, allowing them to engage in passion projects, challenge them in areas of interest, and support students in areas of need. Not only are we targeting students who need more support, but we are also focusing on pushing our students who are getting threes into mastery. Small group instruction is happening in every classroom to target our students' needs. We are going to continue to familiarize students with the format of these tests, test sophistication, and test-taking literacy by utilizing the Wrong Answer Summary document that was created. We are also going to continue to build upon that document and continue the inquiry, action, and reflection process to see what is contributing to the wrong answer patterns, such as why are we getting these questions wrong? As a team, we will continue the ongoing data analysis and informed decision-making process.
So, as you can see that in our analysis, we looked at multiple measures, all which focus on the whole child. And while we looked for trends and we looked for larger percentages, our work is really with the children. By considering this wide array of factors, we can paint a more comprehensive picture of each student's progress, their needs, the programs we use, and our instructional decisions. Our work is building leaders centers around getting support for the students who are below or approaching grade level and stretching those students and pushing them into the mastery. We are excited to continue our work. We're proud of what we've done and we can't wait to continue through the inquiry, action, and reflection process, both as administrators and an elementary team, as well as with our teachers in our buildings. We are continuing to meet with our teachers, doing our data analysis in the buildings, crafting tiered lessons that target instruction, utilizing the win period to give students what they need, continuing our professional learning opportunities so that we're aligning student experiences, and having these added positions of Ms. Nizzler and Mr. Accardi allow us to go even deeper into curriculum design and data analysis as a team, continuing to align our program, making changes as necessary, instructional adjustments, and expanded instructional adjustments, and expanded student opportunities. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present our work, and we appreciate any feedback.
Thank you all so much. We love having you here to present. Ms. D. Martino and Ms. McGovern, welcome officially to the team here tonight presenting on elementary data. I have a couple of questions before I turn it over to my fellow board members. So in terms of benchmarking and NWEA, understanding the New York State assessments are more summative at the end of the year, but the benchmarking and the NWEA, how and how often are these points addressed throughout the school year with parents, communicated to parents along the way?
So every time we take the NWEA, the NWEA results are in the parent portal. So parents can access those three times a year. Parents should have recently got letters that the parent portals opened with the NWEA results on them so they could access the NWEA stuff now. It's also something that teachers talk about at parent-teacher conferences, where they'll have those results available, speak to them about what they're seeing with their child. And similar to the reading benchmarks, parent-teacher conferences, we would talk to parents about that. Sometimes if students are struggling, we'll tend to contact parents more frequently with the benchmarking, but it is discussed at parent-teacher conferences also. Ditto.
Happy to see the increased participation rates. To what do we credit that, do you think?
I think that there was a large movement just on Long Island in general to back off of those exams. I think that the state came back and altered, it was a three-day test, now it's a two-day test. I think culturally, more people took it, and I think as a district, we pushed parents that we do want the students to take the test, that there is ability to it, and the more students that take it, the more we can do with it. If only half the students take the assessment, it's hard for us to do much with that data. But when we have ninety percent of our third graders taking it, ninety-three percent, whatever that number was, that really tells us what those numbers mean, and we have a better grasp of the student scores.
One of the goals for a long time was to get the five buildings communicating more frequently, and I think that's evident here, so that's appreciated, and we look forward to that ongoing communication and work ahead. My last question is in terms of fifth grade transition into sixth grade. So can you just, one of you, give an overview of the process in terms of how are we handing our fifth graders over to the middle school and making that transition as seamless as possible?
Sure. So there is a process that's in place between the middle school and the elementary schools that involve frequent visits. On top of what we do for students to be able to transition, there is time for the guidance counselor to come over, meet with the fifth-grade teachers. They make recommendations, they discuss goals, progress, again, on the whole child, not just academically, but behaviorally, emotionally, and whatnot. At times, also, there are ways for us to carry conversations regarding results, obviously, that they have access to in order to recommend students for maybe support classes and any additional resources that they might need.
Yeah, that's so important. I'm happy to hear that because you have them in your building for all that time, and you know them and their growth throughout, and just handing them over to the middle school, any communication, and the whole piece is really important. Mr. Duffy?
So we've begun using Branching Minds, which is a data platform that we'll be using, all of our students are using. We have NWEA scores on there, we have Hantus Manel scores on there. If you have meetings with parents, all that information goes in there, IST meetings. All those will transfer all the way up to the middle school, and they'll have a clear picture of a student from kindergarten all the way up till they receive them in sixth grade.
Right, thank you. Comments or questions from the board?
I'll jump in. Thank you all for being here tonight and for all the work that went into putting this together. And I just want to compliment our entire staff. I think, you know, there's some notable improvements that have been made. The ELA, the New York State regional gap this year compared to last year was a significant jump. And I think, I can even just see in my fourth to fifth grader, the inquiry unit she's working on and the way she's bringing her book home with Post-its and highlighting, the process has really become much more ingrained, and there's a clear shift that has happened. I can compare her experience to my older two, so I appreciate all the work that's been done with that. Just a couple of questions. So in the benchmarking slides, I just, one of the statistics that seemed a little bit of an outlier, it looks like in the third grade, there was a drop-off. I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on what might account for that?
Sure, we had this conversation. I'm sorry? Oh, slide. We're going to go back to F and P benchmarking, probably five. Right here, right here, perfect. So we had this conversation, and we talked about the fact that, you know, students in K-1, 2 really are learning to read, right, break the code. While moving into third, you're reading to learn. So we do see a little bit of a drop-off mainly due to comprehension, the sophistication of the text, the text questions, the, you know, the need to be more of a critical thinker, think inferentially and beyond the text. So we had that conversation as a team, and that's what we feel has really kind of put that score where it is. Yeah, and then you see kids kind of bounce back in fourth grade.
Makes sense. So I appreciate that insight. For the science assessment, I'm just, obviously, this is the first year, and it changed. Just any thoughts, our numbers were good comparatively, but the, you know, the mastery number, the level four number, obviously, we'd like to see that get a little higher. So just any thoughts on how we're addressing that for this year?
Sure. I think our approach to that is going to be similar to our approach to ELA and math, where we look at questions, now that we have access to the questions, kind of look at test sophistication, bring that to our building level, bring that to our teachers, and have them implement that within their classrooms, within their small group rotations, within their win period. Like I said, it is their first experience taking that. We've seen a lot of growth and success with that approach with our ELA and math. We spoke about the wrong answer analysis that we used, that tool that we created that we were using within our small group instruction, and we saw a big jump in that, using that tool to target different types of questions and vocabulary that is used within those types of questions that maybe weren't being used in our instruction. It's not that we weren't covering topics, but maybe we weren't answering or asking the questions the right way or the way that the test was asking them. So once we have access to those types of questions, we'll bring that to our teachers that they can then use with their students.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just two other comments. So for the win period, I know last year it was sort of the pilot year. And I appreciate the fact that it exists now, and it gives a lot more opportunity for more individualized tailored instruction. And I appreciate that you said you're looking to use it also to push the top, to like challenge themselves a little bit more. I think that's something that now that it's got a year under its belt is something that we really need to focus on for the benefit of our students who are, you know, need that extra challenge. And passion projects, I think, are a great idea, but even just, you know, just more challenging math problems, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. So I'm glad that that's on the radar. I look forward to hearing how that goes. And I'd also just like to say I'm excited that we're looking at the extended response writing. I think, I know we've been focusing on writing at different levels, but the more we can bridge it, you know, across all of our grades, I think it builds, right? So the more we're doing in the younger grades will benefit our students going forward. So thank you again for being here, and we appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome, Mrs. McGovern and Ms. D. Martino. Just two comments. One, I'm happy to hear that we're doing more exposure to computer-based tests from when they're younger because we're finding they're doing more and more of that as they get toward the high school level. They just took their PSATs for a long time on a computer, so I think the most exposure they can get at the young age will get them adjusted to this. We know the state made that transition, so thank you for doing that. I think that's a great thing. Another comment about, just happy that our opt-out numbers are lowering. So this goes to my question. I know Mr. Duffy will probably jump in since you're now a veteran elementary principal. The NWEA, we really relied so heavily on that, especially because it was not an opt-out test, and we've had that data. Do you feel over the years that that test has evolved in time and is still a good option for the district? So are we still happy with NWEA as an assessment tool?
Sure. The NWEA is something we used for a long time. I even helped pilot the very first one that we took years ago. It's something that we use, but there could be other options, and we do look at those other options, even within the NWEA, the map fluency one that I spoke about for kindergarten is something we could use in first grade. It is something that we could expand, and there are other computerized assessments that we could look into. To make a huge, since we're using this K to eight, it's a very big decision. And the teachers are very familiar with it, the students are very familiar with it, and it gives us this big, long, linear picture of the student. So I think that if we found something better, it's something we should look into. But in the meantime, it's doing what it needs to do, and we keep looking at multiple assessments. Because that's why we have the benchmarks where the teachers are reading with the kids. It's why we use the state test, and the fact that we're having so many kids take it now is great. So looking at multiple assessments, it's something that could be done in about an hour. But we could look into other things. If they were better, we should move, think about them.
Yeah, I'm not even suggesting that we do. I'm just want, you're the expert, so I want to hear that.
It's an adaptive test. It could help push kids. It shows us, it provides us with tons of data. So much data on individual students, on classes, on grade levels across the district. So it does give us a lot and still relevant and usable.
I'm glad to hear that because it has been a long time. So it's just good to hear that we're still feeling it's, you know, measurable assessment tool for us. We like the way, you know, it's helping us. And I guess at least in my last question, we talked about this, I think, this time last year. How much are you using the grade-to-grade growth? So we're looking at, you know, if we're looking at the third grade of this year, you know, of last year, now it's the fourth grade of this year. So in your data discovery, how much are you looking ahead at where that actual grade is going?
For the NWEA or for the state data?
For any, for any.
For any. We did a lot of work around the state test this year, and it was very interesting, even as we look at the graphs, looking at the cohorts themselves. So although, so you can see over here where our third graders are at the bottom, they now become fourth graders. So when we look at the data, we look at the whole cohort. Can you back up on the question again?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering how much, we're not just looking at data year to year, but looking at grades year over year over year over year, because to your point, we've been using NWEA.
And we even, we just had a discussion literally hours ago about, even though it's a fifth-grade science test, bringing the third and fourth-grade teachers in, having them look at the questions and circle, where is it in our curriculum that this was covered? Because the science isn't just a fifth-grade topic. So having the third graders know what the expectations are for fifth grade so that they're building on their way up. What curriculum did you cover that the fifth graders are responsible for? How could you ask questions similar to that? And we do the same thing. There's no extended response in third grade, but they need to be aware that there is in fourth and to build the kids up for it. So we have those discussions, and we rely a lot on our reading team and our math coaches for that as well.
Thank you. Now I'm hoping by the time they get to eighth grade, we've been able to really look at how far they've come from when they've been in third grade, that particular grade, because they're the same kids. So that's, thank you. That's my questions. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. In looking at some of the data, specifically comparing our results on the New York State assessment and the NWEA to the data that we have from our F and P benchmarking, there seems to be some inconsistency there, where in the NWEA, if we look at, maybe I'll frame it this way, if we look at our current third grader, so them as a cohort, from second to third grade, we see consistent growth in ELA, on the NWEA, and the New York State assessment, but we're seeing regression on the F and P benchmark. Then as they move up, same thing, our current fourth graders, we're seeing that same trend where there is consistent growth on the NWEA and the New York State assessment for ELA, but there's regression on the F and P benchmarking. So I guess my question is, why are we seeing that inconsistency? Why do some of our benchmarks show growth and some show up to five percent regression?
Great question, and I think, you know, the fact that F and P is an informal assessment, which is not nationally normed, there is some level of subjectivity, right? It's one-on-one with a teacher, not a computer-based test with a right or wrong answer. So that piece does come into play, and we've talked about that in our data meetings. Like, okay, so those kids who, when we looked at, if we go back to maybe slide, I think it was five, we could take a look at it and say, if we dig deep into our student data folders, could that student have possibly been pushed to the next level? You know, there's some judgment calls there when it's administered by a teacher. So I think that we do need to take that piece into consideration. Could it not have been the best day for that particular student? You know, I think there's so many factors involved, but, oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about F and P. Sorry about that. I think it's slide five, yeah. Again, my best answer, and maybe someone else might want to chime in, is that level of subjectivity that is involved because it is, you know, human teacher to student, you know, using some judgment calls in terms of the responses that students give. Yep, fiction and nonfiction texts are used. Exactly, there's the subjectivity part, right? Because we have actual teacher scoring, you know, it's not standardized in that respect. That's my response to that.
No, I think that makes sense. I mean, I've been doing a little bit of research, really just into literacy and F and P as well. And it, you know, a lot of the data that comes back about the program suggests and talks about the validity of F and P benchmarking comes back about reliability to the same extent where you could test the same child with two different books and get two completely different scores.
Absolutely.
So it brings me to question, while it is a data point, and all data is good data, this is a data point that takes a significant amount of time. If we're talking twenty to thirty minutes per student three times a year, we're talking about forty hours of instruction that's being spent on benchmarking to get a result that may or may not be reliable. And then we think about that idea of the whole child. Our elementary students only get twenty hours of art for the entire year, but we're spending forty hours on benchmarking something that we don't know if it's reliable. So it makes me really question, if we have data from the New York State assessment and our kids are taking it, if we have data from the NWEA, is this worth continuing to do? Because in my mind, as a parent, looking at it, I don't, I don't see, I shouldn't even say as a parent, but also from a board perspective, when we think about we have new science standards, when we think about we have a science test, and we know that social studies and science are generally on the back burner at the elementary due to the constraints from literacy and math, this forty hours to me doesn't seem like it's negotiable. But because we're getting results that, again, are conflicting with what we have and we know from research may or may not be reliable, it just makes me question. I don't need an answer. I'm just kind of talking right now.
Can I say something just as a former reading, I'll never be a former reading specialist. I'll always be a teacher at heart. I think the, it's the double-edged sword. I get what you're saying. But the one-on-one time, particularly in the younger grades, right, in that K-1, 2, even 3, the information that teachers gain is so valuable in terms of how a child interacts with the text. What are their decoding strategies? You know, are there noting confusions in terms of the phonetic, like letter sound correspondence, noting their strategies for comprehension? Do they look back in the text naturally, right? Do they need questions repeated and rephrased? So that information is invaluable. Yet I understand it, there is a time-consuming component to it. So again, you know, back to what I had said, I think the value is more in the information gained from the anecdotal notes a teacher can take around this assessment rather than the actual level, if that makes sense.
No, it does. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure.
A couple of other questions that I had when looking at the New York State assessment scores. I mean, it's nice to be able to see our mastery level and our proficiency level as a cohort, but I'm wondering, when we look at our own data and we break it down by class, race, and ability, what are we seeing there? How does each subgroup compare into the district average as in regard to our achievement gap? Are we seeing it? Are we seeing change in achievement gap? I know there has been one there. So I guess that's my question, is what change are we seeing with regards to how our subgroups of students are performing?
So that's not something that we focused on for this report, but it's certainly something that we could look into and have ready at a future date.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know that, you know, specifically around culturally responsive practices and how those are being implemented and integrated in the elementary classroom, making sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students. And just really making sure that there is accountability in place to ensure that all of our students are making progress and that we're teaching to, you know, to their needs. My last question really relates to UPK. And we've had UPK now for the past few years. I'm wondering if, how we're seeing, or if we're seeing or noticing any changes in our primary grades with regards to readiness coming in for English and math comparative to before we had UPK.
Sure. I think that what we've seen since UPK and since some of the changes that we've made in the way in which we're teaching our K2 students aligned across the district, using, you know, foundations, integrating decodables, having that alignment, sharing practices around reading and how students learn to read, we have definitely seen students making progress in a very systematic way. Which also helps us identify when students are struggling, where we can interject, set goals, and then do the work around that. So I'd like to think it also has to do with our UPK and that early exposure and larger numbers, certainly. It helps build background knowledge, it helps students build vocabulary, it helps them more ready to learn when they walk through the door because they're coming from a classroom environment in a UPK. They're making friends, there's a familiarity, so on and so forth. But I think that coupled with the methods in which we're teaching and the alignment across the district, and more recently, the work that we've done from kindergarten backwards into UPK and having those conversations will continue to increase that.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate the report.
Thank you for this analysis. And I think, again, it speaks to the consistency among the five elementary schools that no matter what elementary school a student attends in our school district, they are receiving a consistent approach, an aligned program of instruction, support, review, the fact that you're all meeting, and I'm sure involving teachers to make sure that you are providing a consistent educational experience no matter where a family might live. In terms of our goals, right? We're driving student achievement. We expect and we like to see that our student scores are higher than the national norms, higher than the state, higher than the region, even when it's the highest performing region. And we want to see that in terms of what makes up that national norm? Maybe you can speak to the NWEA? Who is in that RIT score that we are comparing ourselves to nationally?
So there are thousand, no, there are millions of tests that have been taken that go into that score. Every four or five years, they change those norms. But the way that the NWEA is set up is that 50% will be a normal, an average score for a student. So it's millions of data points. Many, many states around the country take it and they absorb all the statistics from all the tests that are taken. I mean, even just in my career, I think I've administered thousands of assessments just here in Roffel Center. So the data points are over a million, I believe, if a number that I've seen. So they use that data over the course of several years to compile their norms and then we get comparative data based on that.
Thank you. That, that makes sense. And when I'm thinking about data points, I want to make sure that parents listening know that a child and all of these data points, these are all methods to get to know your child, right? So that as a parent, I feel that whether it's this benchmark or this standardized test or this assessment, that these are all constellation points, right? So that a teacher and a parent and a family can have that parent-teacher conference and really be speaking from the same page, right? These are all the ways that we are getting to know your students so that you, you feel confident that the student is understood. And in terms of, one of the things I found striking, while you're still at the mic, Mr. Duffy, it's slide number 11. And I guess we're still in the NWEA MAP, Reading Fluency for Kindergarten. You know, sometimes the percentages can be tricky in a data presentation. You know, like one or two students in the pool could, you know, move that number. But the Listening Comprehension bar graph from fall with 25% below, you know, what we're looking for. And then the growth to spring is amazing, right? So to what do we attribute that sort of growth?
Sure, so we have to picture that this is a wide variety of over 200 kindergartners coming into five different schools with various... This is them at the very first time we get them. These are students one month into coming to school with various different backgrounds and various different experiences at pre-K. Some of these students are immersed in literacy at home and at school and some might be their first time in the classroom. So, and then they're also doing it in a computerized setting. So they're sitting on a computer. Some of them are very averse to using Chromebooks and some not so much. But also, who knows how often they've been asked questions before or asked to respond to a question before. So I'm not stunned that these numbers would start off low and then they make great progress over the year as we systematically move them through the reading process.
That's great, thank you. And I think my last question, a lot of my fellow board members have asked about the win period. Thank you for explaining what I need makes up that win period. And I'm hoping, and any of you can feel free to chime in, in terms of who decides what happens for a student's win period?
Sure.
You know, are these places where there's differentiated instruction?
Sure, so it's a, it can be a case-by-case basis. There are students who need services. So the very first place that we look into is that win period. There are students who might get reading, that's every other day in their cycle. Then that would give them three win periods in the classroom. If you get reading and math, all your win periods have been used up and you're probably not, you're going to use them for services because that's what that student needs. And then other students, it depends on the grade level and it depends on the teacher, the building. We did speak about what are we doing in these classes to raise the level? The more the teachers are using the win period and talking to each other about what they're doing within the buildings, they have some great ideas. And they needed a little time to sort out, what's the best way to use my win period? And even amongst one grade level, I've seen three different teachers do three different things. I just encourage a systematic approach and to share what you're doing. And when we see good things happening in the classroom, we want to share them with our own building and then we want to share them at with the other buildings. And we share ideas and we have our teachers share ideas and they have grade level meetings where they're sharing ideas of what they do. I have one teacher who might be doing Math Monday and Writing Wednesday and every day of the week doing a new thing. And then we have other teachers who are really looking at an individual student or giving student choice. What is it you would like to work on? So it can come in a variety of different ways. And I think that as long as the teachers are being creative, looking at the individual child and sharing the good things that they're doing with everybody, we're all going to benefit from that.
Right, thank you.
We would also like to thank the board for all your hard work. We appreciate you and all the support that you give to our buildings, to us and to our programs. So before we end of the presentation, I do want to say that collectively from us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's very much appreciated. We appreciate you and what you do every day for our kids. So thank you for being here and thank you for being you, okay? If you would like to leave before Mr. Gavin's presentation, I will allow that if you want. We have another presentation this evening. Mr. Gavin will be addressing our three-year strategic plan. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Gavin, we'll stay here for your presentation.
I was going to say, should I take that personally? Yikes. Thank you, Ms. Barry, you really helped me clear the room. Really appreciate that.
No problem.
I'm here this evening to talk about one of our important initiatives this year, which is our three-year strategic plan. Tonight's presentation is basically an overview of the process. So we've come to go through the way we look at board goals, the way we look at objectives and the things that we do here. We want to be very process-oriented. And one of the things that we share back with the board and share publicly is the way we go about doing things. So for us, it's really important to come together and spend a quick 10 minutes talking about what the process is, knowing that the results of the process will be presented periodically over the course of the year with final recommendations at the end of the year, the final meeting of the year for the three-year plan. So for us, what we want to do with our three-year strategic plan is start with the values that are important to us here in Roffel Center. Last year, we did a value survey where we asked all of our parents and our teachers, this was not a student-based survey, but our parents and our teachers, to give us a little bit of insight about the things, the values that were important to them. Why do we start with values? We start with values because that will help us drive the things that we end up doing. So we would like to know, for example, these are eight of the top values that came back from our survey. We had a list of 20. The bottom 12 were so close in terms of percentages that this is why I took the top eight. The clear number one that came back from the community, the clear number one was excellent. So if the board remembers from last year when we did this presentation, excellence was by far the thing that our community values the most. So we want to take that value of excellence and how do we demonstrate it? And how do we incorporate that into the things that we do as part of our plan? So again, we start here from what is important and how do we actualize what comes back as important from the community into the work that we do each and every day? So the plan starts this way. So first, to kind of take a little bit of a step back, what is strategic planning? Well, it's basically a way of trying to set goals and priorities for our entire district and our community. What does that look like? Well, it looks like, how do we align the work that we're doing in terms of board goals and the work that the board has done along with Central Office to discuss what are the things that are important to us? How do they reflect our values? Are they aligned? Are we spending our money in the right way? Supporting the things that we say that are important to us? Aligning not only the outcomes and opportunities that we talk about in terms of our board goals, but also our financial resources and oversight and also our strategic partnerships with community members and with community organizations, again, to kind of go back and provide opportunities for our students. What strategic planning does is it allows us to create a roadmap for the future. Now typically, you can see some strategic plans out there that go out for a horizon as far as five years. I, in my personal opinion, I was a little worried about five years. The only reason I chose for three years is because of the rate of change in terms of technology that we've been seeing over the last few years and another factor that I'll talk about in a quick second. So it usually covers a range from three to five years. You set a vision for where you want to go. You make sure that your mission is aligned. And then you work through the process of setting goals and strategic steps that you're going to take in order to meet that vision or to get as close as humanly possible to that vision. So why do we want this? We want this because we're constantly faced as a district with decisions. As a board, as a superintendent, as Central Office, we're constantly asked, should we be doing X or should we be doing Y? When we have a strategic plan, we can come back and we have a filter now where we could turn around and say, in our strategic plan, these are the things that we have held important. So your request for X is aligned with that. That's something that we can do, we can afford, we can find a way to move it forward. Your request for Y doesn't necessarily line up with whatever that strategic plan and outcome is, which helps us as a board of decision-making, for me as a superintendent, making recommendations to you, what things make sense within where we want to go. So again, that talks about guiding decision-makings and resource allocations. Why are we doing this now? Well, you know, we've mentioned this before at previous board meetings. One of the things that's coming up that I think will be a major source of change in the next three to five to eight to 10 years is the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations for specifically high school. So one of the things that we know is that one credential that the vast majority, nearly 90% of our students every year get is the Advanced Region Diploma. One of the recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission is that credential will now go away. So we've worked and have a system in place where a lot of our students go through coursework that gain that credential. If that credential is not in place and there's alternates, how are we working with our high school program? How does that high school program filter down to that middle school and elementary and prepare our students for those opportunities? Then I mentioned this before, how are we aligned with our board goals as well? How are we taking what New York State is saying? How are we taking what our values are? And how are we enhancing student opportunities and outcomes? How are we saying, okay, we have a new course that we'd like to offer for our students? Is that aligned with our strategic vision? Like, it'd be cool, but it makes no sense. So we want to make sure that the things that we want to do make sense within the efforts and the values that we hold dear. The other thing that strategic planning does is it really aligns our efforts across the district. So what you try to come away with is a plan that says, here's something that's important to us that represents our values in a specific area. I'll just say assessment, like we were talking about before. We might have a question about whether or not NWEA is the most valid assessment. There might be action steps where we can go, say, let's investigate if there are opportunities or alternatives that might be better aligned with our strategic vision. That's not saying we're getting rid of NWEA, I don't want anyone to walk away and say that. But it is an opportunity for us to assess our current practice. Does it align with the mission and the vision that we have? And makes sense within the context and the values that we hold dear. The other piece that this lets us do is start to anticipate and prepare for challenges and opportunities. What does that mean? So if we know we have a vision for, I will just say, facilities, that we want to enhance a certain facility here in the district and that's part of our vision, that's aligned with our values, that's the things that we want to do, we now have three years to plan for that. Is it something that we're going to do during the first year? Is it something that might be part of a larger plan that might need two or three years for us to kind of make an enhancement for? I'll just say like something similar, like if we wanted to redo an art room here in the high school. So if that's something that's important to us, that our art facility allows for kids to feel creative in that space, then one of the things that we would do would be, okay, where does that fit within the budget? How does that impact instruction? How does that fit within our strategic mission? So the other thing that strategic plans do is promote accountability and measurable results. So one of the things we started since I've been here is we now have data presentations from every level, every year. Because that's accountability and those are measurable results. Those are the data points that you can walk away with and say, we're seeing progress in XYZ, we still remain with instructional challenges in ABC, whatever that is, and we're working towards it. And I think that's part of what we want to see is that accountability and measurable results. The other thing that the strategic plan does is, outside of the assessment pieces, if we have a three-year plan for facilities, what does that look like? Do we meet the objectives that we set out for ourselves three years ago? Does the objective even make sense? Maybe an art room redo at the high school doesn't make sense. Maybe it makes sense to do at the middle school. Why would that circumstance change? And we would have that conversation. So what are the key elements of a strategic plan? So for me, even though the vision is listed on top about where do we want to go, the most important thing is why do we come to work every day in terms of the mission? So one of the things that we're going to talk about as part of our strategic planning committee is why do we come to work? Our current mission statement doesn't make sense? Is this something that we feel is not only making sense right now, but will make sense three years from now or five years from now? Are these, is our mission statement aligned with our values or not aligned with our values? And we're going to start with the mission first as we create the vision with the strategic planning group. Then once we have that mission and we're comfortable with the mission or not, or we're going to make a change or we're going to make a recommendation for a change, whatever that is, we align what our vision would be and then work backwards to what are the goals we have to fulfill that vision and then what are the strategies and steps we'll take? Who are the lucky representatives to do all of this hard work? Well, a few of them are sitting in this room. So we will have teacher representatives from each building. We will have a Board of Education representative. We will have administrators, administrators not only from people from Central Office like you'll see here, but you'll also have building representatives in terms of principals or assistant principals. We will have parent reps in terms of, from both the organization of PTA and SEP for the organizations that already exist. We want to use the structures that already exist in terms of, we have a representative group in terms of PTA and SEP. We will have representatives from each building. So all of the PTA co-presidents from each building are invited. The SEP president is invited. I know that we do have some people that are presidents but are also SEP members, so we have some crossover in there as well. And what we're going to ask, and they don't even know this yet, but tomorrow they will, because our first meeting is tomorrow. But one of the things that we're asking people to do is take out of every meeting that we have as a whole group and as a small group, what are the three takeaways that they can report back to in PTA? What are three questions they would want to have for their stakeholders related to that work? So let's say we're talking about our mission statement. At the mission statement, it's been decided, we've kind of come through and said, we think it's really aligned with our values, but we want more stakeholder input. We would go back to the PTA. There might be a quick little Google form that says, do you think these values are aligned with this mission statement? We get some feedback and be able to digest that at our next meeting. The other component to all of this, since I've started here as well,[1725.02] The other component to all of this, since I've started here as well, we do a climate survey each and every year so that we make sure that we engage not only our students who take the climate survey in grades three to 12, but we also make sure that we engage our teachers, all of our teachers, and all of our parents have the opportunity to participate. So that last year, I believe we had like 900 or over 900 responses all in, in terms of, in terms of parents. So we have not a complete entire representative sample, but a pretty representative sample, and give people the opportunity that if they're not on the team or they're not in the actual strategic planning group, that they have the opportunity, not only through PTA, they also have it through surveys. The final thing, they're not really the final thing, they're the most important thing, but on this list, we're also doing student surveys that we're going to ask, that will come as a result of some of the individual work we do each of the meetings. And we're also going to hold focus groups. So one of the things I found really important last year when we talked about transition from middle school to high school, and we talked about transition from elementary to middle school, was the opportunity to sit down with the appropriate building administrator, guidance, whoever it was, and then have a conversation with kids about what their experiences were and what they'd like them to be. So some of the things that have come out of those different focus groups are, we changed high school orientation this year to more reflect what the kid said, I wasn't able to do this, I'd like to be able to do more of this now. Middle school, we actually have the high school guidance counselor go down and meet their actual kids down at the middle school now, because we listen to kids, because we listen to teachers, and we try to tighten up the procedure. So these are the people that will be involved in the process. So again, we start off with analyze our current state, identify focus areas, develop three-year outcomes and action steps, and then we're going to present our findings to the board as part of that process. So each one of the missions, each one of the meetings that we hold will have an opportunity to do all of these things. So if we identify curriculum as an area that we, which I'm sure we will, but if we identify curriculum as an area that we want to focus on, identify the current state, identify focus areas, action steps, and then present our findings to the board. And then finally, we've chosen our parent and teacher representatives. We have our board of education representatives, and tomorrow, in this very room, from 4:30 to 6:00, we will hold our initial strategic planning meeting. We also, I believe Ms. Flanagan sent out the dates. I have to send the dates to one other person, but we have to send the dates that we have at least temporarily planned until we get everyone in the room for the future meetings for the rest of the year. We can anticipate at least one large group meeting of the 42 members or 43 members of the strategic planning group that will happen once a month. Then we will most likely have breakout meetings depending on which area or outcome you'd like to focus on. That make sense? Did I miss anything? Okay, good. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. I have asked Dr. Downing to be the representative from the board on this committee, so thank you, Dr. Downing, for agreeing to represent us in those discussions. Mr. Gavin, you'll be updating the full board as well throughout the process as you stated, so maybe more formally either in December or January, whenever you feel is fit, at a meeting, just to update us as well as a full board in public on the work of the committee. And in terms of the parents, we thank all of the participants that are giving their time, as always, to this important work. I want it to be clear that, you know, it's a two-way communication, right? So you'll bring the information back to our other parents, guardians, families, but other, if they want to get information back to the committee, that you would be a resource for them too, to, beyond participating in the survey, they would know that you would be the point people to come and bring that back to the committee. So I think that's important. We thank you in advance for all the work that you'll be doing on that. Any comments or questions from the board?
I think you mentioned earlier that we had attended the New York State School Board Association Conference earlier this week, and I, there was a lot more talk about strategic plans, I think, from a lot of districts across New York State, maybe in response to what we're also thinking in terms of the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations that might come out, any graduation requirement changes. And I think now is the right time, and that no matter when you do a strategic plan, you know, it should bring order and cohesion and help you set priorities, but knowing that some change is coming in a significant way for our students, having a structure that allows us to forward plan and make sure that we are able to implement any of the recommendations that come down, I think this is the right time. And I wouldn't go past three years either in terms of three to five years, given the changes of technology and how the pace of change is accelerating.
I think that's an important point to consider because the other thing that we saw a lot of at the board conference was how fast artificial intelligence has been literally advancing, like to the point where instructional models are going to change, and they're going to change pretty rapidly. And I just want to make sure that we're doing so in a way that is strategic, in a way that we think about what's best for kids, in a way that, again, reflects our values and is aligned with the best outcomes and possible opportunities for kids.
Thank you. I just had a comment and a little bit of gratitude also for the budgetary part of this. You know, we go through such an, you know, extensive budget process every year, and we really try to be as transparent as possible about why we're, you know, how we're doing things, how we're building and budget. But we have toyed around over the years that we've been on the board about bonds. And I really think that, I feel that if we get to the point where we decide to put up a bond, we'll have been able to back that up with a strategic plan that kind of lays out that that bond is not a one-time investment that we're making into the district, but it kind of plays into a multi-year level of investment. And it's just something I think is really important to that process. It really is important for our transparency and our trust from the community and from our taxpayers. So I just want to say thank you because I believe that that's just such a necessary, and we may come to the strategic plan and decide, we don't need a bond because we have repurposed our budget in very creative ways over the years, and we appreciate that too. But I'm just saying, I think it just kind of flows into conversations we've had here at this table, and I appreciate the work you're going to be doing to kind of help the community understand why and how we make decisions. So thank you for that.
I think that's the reason, right? That's the frame, that does this fit or does it not fit? Should we do this expenditure or not? Does it align with what we want in terms of values? Does it enhance opportunities or outcomes for kids? If it does, does it make sense within the framework of New York State's Blue Ribbon and the new things that they're asking kids to do? So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one question. You know, one of our kind of bucket board goals this year relates to community engagement. And when we're looking at the strategic plan committee, I feel like we are absent the community representative, where we have a parent representative who's representing parents in the school district, but how are we bringing in that community voice to this plan? Because I think it is important for community members from the larger community to be part of this committee, especially as we look to form partnership, to advance opportunities for our children. I'm not sure what the best way to do that is, but it would be something I would appreciate seeing.
Great.
Thank you.
And to that point, this discussion started really as a byproduct of our discussion and looking at setting our board goals for the year. So once again, I thank all of you really because it came out of collaboration around a discussion where we wanted to go, and the strategic plan was mentioned, and now it's starting to come to fruition. And we look forward to hearing updates along the way. So thank you very much. Okay, turning to policies. Currently at stage one, 3412, threats of violence in school. There was some update in language.
Yeah, this was really just kind of language updates, no mass change or huge change.
Okay. Okay to move this. We have 3430, uniform violent and disruptive incident system. We're looking to rescind this policy.
That is correct. Vader is not really used anymore. There's other things, but this doesn't mean that we're not reporting to the state. The law provides when things have to be reported, they are being reported. One of the things that the policy committee has been looking to do is to try to take things out of policies that don't need to be there, that just become stale or wrong.
Exactly.
So that we don't get ourselves in the same place we are, that things are wrong, so the districts are doing things the right way, the policy just doesn't reflect that.
Exactly. Thank you. Okay. 3510, emergency closings.
Yeah, it's the same idea that we're really just updating in terms of the current way that we make announcements rather than the legacy language that had been in here for 20 years or so.
We just forgot to add the student that might be making the phone call.
I don't know if we're ready to publicize that one, but it will be fun, that I can tell you.
I mean, you know what, I think it is broader also, so it's not a specific, so that, you know, things are going to change, like, so it still would be included in this without having to change the policy.
Thank you. Okay to move this?
Yep.
3520, extraordinary circumstances, no revision needed.
We hope we never need to use this.
Okay. Okay to move? Okay. 4211, line responsibility.
Yeah, just looking at the accompanying org chart.
Yep.
And the line of responsibility.
Yep, so this goes along with 4212, which is the org chart, which is reflective of our current system. And we are okay to move both of these?
Yep.
Okay. We're looking to rescind 4250, use of committees.
We have another policy that does the same thing, so instead of having two policies, thank you, Janet, for realizing that.
Perfect. Actually, yeah, so it's 2210, which is on our consent agenda to approve. It's already gone through the three stages, so we can, yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep use of committees as a rescission through the same stages.
Things look, things look familiar, but I'm not sure if it's this district or another district. So it's always nice to have another eye.
Yeah, we're here to help.
A testament to the work of the policy committee. Thank you very much. It's much appreciated.
A close eye.
My favorite, my favorite part of the.
Yeah.
Grateful for it.
Yes, very grateful.
We're so grateful for it, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Stage two, we have 1251, student voter registration and preregistration.
Yep, no change since the last meeting.
Okay. And that comes out of election law. 3230, public complaints.
Yep.
Okay to move this?
Minor changes, yep.
3250, Rockville Center Council of PTAs. Okay to move this?
Big thank you, yes.
Yes, thank you once again. 3272, advertising in schools. Okay to move this?
Yep.
3220, confidentiality of computerized information. Okay to move?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have currently at stage three, 2320, compensation and expenses.
Yep. Good.
2330, consultants to the board.
Rescinding, yep.
Yep. 3110, school-sponsored media.
Same, rescinding.
3150, before-school, after-school program, project grade.
Rescind, don't need to have it.
Okay.
Just clarifying for people who might have listened this.
Right, that's the policy.
Not getting rid of. The policy has become unnecessary.
Right.
Agreed. And 3220, public expression at meetings.
Yes, same as last week.
Thank you again. It's been a mission to make sure that our policy manual is streamlined and updated and accurate, so I appreciate that work. Thank you.
And I think we're doing well.
We are, we are.